Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Monday, February 12th, 2018. The Westwood Board of Selectmen will begin this evening as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and the Republic of which stands my nation under God indivisible, worthy and just as for all.
Grant Westcat permission to both audiotape and videotape tonight's proceeding and anyone else who wishes to record tonight's proceeding. Okay, hearing none. We're going to start this evening with a moment of silence for Janet Shigalian. Ms. Shigalian was a resident of Westwood. She was -- who passed away in the past couple of weeks. She was the first woman elected to the Westwood Board of Selectmen in 19...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, thank you. Many people knew her as a co-host of some radio programs on WRKO, and she had run for statewide office several times. Ms. Shigalian, before and after her service on the Board of Selectmen, served on a number of town boards. So I'd ask that you join me in a moment of silence. We are happy again this year to announce Westwood Day, which grows every year and has become more and more successful. Westwood Day this year will be on Saturday, September 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We will have much more information to come. Westwood Day is always incredibly successful because of the number of volunteers that we have, so we will again be seeking the community's help in making that event successful. The Board of Selectmen will be attending, or one or all of us, or someone? Will be attending an Eagle Scout ceremony on Sunday, March 11th, 2008, at the First Baptist Church. Once again this year, Westwood has a nice complement of young men who have completed the rank of Eagle Scout. This year Marco DiAngelo, Matthew Moltato, Sean Ross, and Gregory Fleming have completed the requirements for the rank of Eagle Scout. We appreciate all the work that they and their families have put into this program. Westwood disproportionately produces a high number of Eagle Scouts every year in comparison to communities throughout Massachusetts. That's really a point of pride for us as a town. First order of business this evening. There is a change of manager on record for Del Frisco's Grill. Welcome. Do you want us to take us through the process?
Sure. This is Alyssa Pablo.
Hello.
The proposed new manager of the restaurant, and this is Jane Richards, attorney for Del Frisco's Grill. You issued a license, I believe it was in September, October, and then renewed it again in December for Del Frisco's, and they're about this close to opening up, so.
Very close.
Now that, as they get closer, we have a proposed new manager.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well. Want to just tell us a little bit about yourself and the program you plan to run, and your experience in running a grill with a alcohol license?
Sure. I have been in the restaurant business for about eighteen years. I've been with Del Frisco's exclusively for eleven of those years. We are proud to be coming into Westwood and joining the community here. We're in Burlington and Chestnut Hill and the seaport of Boston. Massachusetts in general is one of the most prideful places for the restaurant group. We have a number of restaurants, more than we have in other states, so we're excited to come. Slated to open March 14th.
Is that a firm date?
St. Patrick's Day weekend.
(laughing) Leading in.
Do you have anything?
Nora, this is still contingent upon ABCC approval?
ABCC approval has been received. The only thing that we're waiting for is the issuance of the final CBO. I'm sorry, on the original license is being received, yes. We have to submit the management change.
That's what I mean. Okay.
Submit that to ABCC, and it's still, and the overall license is still contingent upon final CBO and TIPS training certification.
So this is really procedural?
It is.
Yeah. I'm all set.
Okay, I move that we approve the petition for change of manager of record for Del Frisco's Grill located at 60 University Avenue from Torrey Smith to Alyssa Pablo, contingent upon final approval from the ABCC and certificate of occupancy and TIPS training.
I'll second.
This is not a public hearing, but I will take any comments, anybody, any concerns? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose none. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the opening.
Thank you very much.
Change in license, Class 1 auto license, Porsche dealership license holder, AMR Holdings
PO LLC. That's a mouthful. What does it all mean?
This is also a, pretty much a change in name only. Do you want to?
Thank you. My name's Scott Solon. I'm general counsel to Prime Motor Group, and we are essentially, our manufacturer had requested that we separate our Porsche and our Audi corporation, our entities. They used to be in one building. They used to operate under primarily a single franchise agreement, but those two operations and the manufacturers have requested that they separate. Thus the two separate buildings that went up recently, so that we're now going through the formal process of requesting permission to have the separate Porsche entity have its own Class 1 license.
Is that generally liability reasons behind that? Is it liability reasons to separate the two? I mean, I'm fine with separating the two, but is that generally why, or?
No, generally, I wouldn't say liability reasons. They don't like, as Ernie Bach has always promoted, they like exclusivity, and they generally like being, doing business with one entity that is performing operations on, just on behalf of that individual manufacturer. It doesn't really make a whole terrible...
So it reflects operations, really, is what it's coming down to.
Yes, absolutely. And really, financial statements, they like them to be separated so that each entity has, is operating with its own set of books.
Same management, I assume?
Absolutely, same management, same ownership group. Nothing else has changed.
One motion? Okay. I move we grant a new Class 1 auto dealership license to AMR Auto Holdings-PO LLC for operation of the Porsche dealership at 411 Providence Highway, contingent upon the surrender of the December 18th, 2017 Class 1 auto dealership license issued to AMR Holdings-PA LLC for operation of the same facility.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed none. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for accommodating us this evening.
Great, thank you.
Audit Committee.
Audit Committee, so we have two members.
Thanks for joining us.
Susan Flanagan Cahill and Mike Pipetti are two of the three members of the Audit Committee. Fred Steves is the other member. And each year when the Audit Committee completes their work and review of the annual audit, they come in and report to the Board and Selectmen.
Great, thank you.
We've got a brief written report we could do?
Yes, they do have that.
Thanks, Susan.
And we do have other members of our finance team are here tonight, where we have Larry Towne, Kathy Foley, Assistant Treasurer.
So on behalf of the Audit Committee, which also includes Fred Steves, as Pam mentioned, Mike and I are pleased to be here tonight to present our report on the town's FY '17 audit. Once again, Powers &amp; Sullivan, the town's audit firm, issued a clean audit report. It was unqualified opinion and did not, they did not find any instances of noncompliance under the government auditing standards, and they also did not find any deficiencies in internal controls that are considered to be material weaknesses. We, as the committee, we had the opportunity to meet with Pam and her team and Powers &amp; Sullivan in mid-December, and we had, you know, the chance to ask questions and to review the audit and the financial statements. And, you know, we were very pleased with the audit, and we did not have any concerns. There was one comment from last year's audit related to police overtime, and that issue has been resolved. There was one new comment for FY '17 relating to allocation of charges of indirect costs to the sewer fund, and Pam let me know today that that, now they have procedures in place to update the formula for how indirect costs are charged to the sewer fund, so that comment has already been, been addressed. Mike, I don't know if you want to mention at all about the OPEB. There was a new GASB related to the OPEB trust reporting, and that went smoothly. There's another going to be, a new GASB that will go into effect next year related to OPEB trust reporting, but, you know, I think we're in a good position to...
Be comfortable with it?
Yes.
Yeah, and they really pulled the liability into the financial statements, which already existed anyway, but it was just a change in, most of corporate America did that a number of years ago, and it finally, the nonprofits caught up.
In concurrent with audit, the Powers &amp; Sullivan did conduct, conduct an internal, agreed upon procedures, review of the high school student activity funds, and that was something they had done previously for 2014 and 2015. And as a result of this review, they determined that the school district had resolved seven of the comments that were from 2014, '15, and there were twelve continuing comments, but we also met with Heath Patraca, and he assured us that, you know, again, the school district's working with the town, and they're working to refine policies and procedures to make sure that those comments are addressed. And we also discussed, and it was decided that there'll be another, there'll be an annual agreed upon procedure review of the high school, middle school, and the Sheehan Elementary School, and then an every other year review of the other elementary schools because they don't have, the dollar amounts of the student activity funds are much smaller for the smaller elementary schools. So we felt comfortable with that as well.
When I read that, I do find that just, on its face, a little odd, though, and I guess, what is the difference between the Sheehans' account and, say, the Martha Jones' and the other ones? I mean, is it that?
The Sheehan has a larger dollar volume because they do that play each year.
Okay.
That generates, it puts them into the over 25,000 category.
I guess, what's the, what's the downside of doing all of the elementary schools every year?
Yeah, cost.
Time and money.
It would be a little incremental cost. You know, we thought about risk and dollars, but again, the whole focus on changing the schedule was around what we're all reading in the papers about others having trouble...
Right, that's what concerns me.
So it was less oversight in the past, and the town, and we agreed that it made sense to add more. You know, it wouldn't be a major effort to add the others. We just collectively thought the risk wasn't necessarily there with the smaller dollar.
But I'm curious, we must be learning something about managing the accounts? And are we taking experiences of what we're now doing better and applying it to the smaller accounts? I mean, what is going on internally to help support the smaller schools and slash, who's responsible for these accounts and the record keeping? Do you have information on that?
I mean, my sense from Heath was that, yes, he is working with all the schools, and they are, you know, trying to spread, as you say, you know, sort of best practices and ensure that the policies, both the DESC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they have guidelines, and then also the school committee has adopted policies, so just doing appropriate trainings and making sure that, you know, things are appropriately communicated to the school principals and staff who, who deal with the student activity funds. And just to give you a sense of some of the comments, I don't know if that would be helpful, but one, you know, one of the comments for this year was that, you know, there were accounts that were still active that should have been closed, like the 2014 and 2016 graduation accounts for the high school were still open and active. For ticketed events, they're supposed to, the policy of the school committee is to pre-number, you know, tickets and receipts, and they didn't find, you know, evidence that that had occurred. So I think, you know, they're taking steps to make sure going forward, people know to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll defer to you, you know, and I appreciate all the work you put into it. I just, it is a sensitive issue, you know, these accounts, so maybe when we revisit it next year, it's just, you know...
And I would say some of the findings, although minor, were also in the areas where there are sensitivities, around 1099s and things like that. So, so they are learning something by doing these and applying them elsewhere, but there were definitely learnings this year, I think, that didn't even happen the year before.
Is there some kind of checklist and sign-off for who's responsible for review, or can we ask that the schools do something like that where it's not just Heath teaching people because there's turnover and things? And so not, not being behind the scenes, like you might have looked at, or that the auditors did, I would think there, it would be a good idea if not already in place to have a standardized end-of-the-year checklist, list of responsibilities, and that there's principal sign-off and then central administration sign-off, for instance, some regimented program.
They do. It's a relatively new area. I think maybe about five years ago, the DOE started requiring the audits. So all schools have been improving procedures over the last couple of years. But Heath, as part of kind of the audit review and working with our audit firm, really put a lot of effort in the last couple of years. He has developed a full policy manual that dictates exactly what they should be doing in each area, does go out and do training to the different schools. Part of the audit process is the audit firm looks at the, to see if you have appropriate internal controls in that policy document and, or things documented. All of the funds run through the town's accounts, so the bank accounts are overseen by the treasurer's office. The payments at the end run through the accounting and general ledger, so there's a lot of interaction through the town processes, too. But I think what we discussed is just, it's, it's also one of those things that's ever-changing. There's all kinds of new clubs. What, they had something this year, I think, there was a club, we were like, my gosh, they come up with all kinds of clubs at the high school.
That'll keep happening.
It's just like always changing thing, you want to stay up with it, and that's why we thought if we just did the audit every year, we're never going to fall that far behind. We'll take the comments, we'll prove, we'll make sure we're doing things correctly, even if things keep changing.
I just would still like you to consider some kind of sign-off process by appropriate positions, not necessarily individuals, but positions that it be standardized, it be the principal, or it be whatever, and Heath, as part of the overall process.
We can probably ask Powers &amp; Sullivan about some best practices, Nancy, just to say, what are others doing in that regard?
Because I think there's heightened awareness now, but we don't want it to...
And the good news is, I mean, we, you all have been working on this before, all about publicity in other places.
That's right.
So this is, I mean...
Yeah, it's good.
My response to people was, we are actually ahead of the curve. We're learning as we go, but we've been doing work on this, so it's great. And I know, not always the best assignment to have the audit, so I really do appreciate all you do, we really do. It's important to have. Do you have anything, Michael? No, okay.
Any other? That's it? That's very good news.
And Powers &amp; Sullivan, again, once again, they did, you know, really was complimentary of Pam and her team, just in terms of them being open and responsive and organized, so it's always good to hear.
The report is a pretty amazing document, actually. I do this for a living, and the report that they get, they pull together, the CAFR is really high-quality and very well-done, so they deserve a lot of credit from that standpoint.
Yeah, it's great. It really is, thank you.
Thank you for doing that work for us.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Looks like we're, food pantry lease agreement. Welcome.
Good evening.
Okay, so what's going on here?
Okay, so I'm Maya Plotkin. I am the president of the Westwood Food Pantry. And as you probably know, in 2015, the Food Pantry, which had been a part of the senior center and was sort of operating under those auspices, became its own separate 501(c)(3). And in time, we realized, you know, we're still operating out of a town building, so we should really get a lease in place. We did put insurance in place right away, so we've had that since 2015, and this lease has just sort of been a work in progress. So the lease has been negotiated between the Food Pantry and the town, and I think what you have in front of you is the final version. I can run through a couple highlights for you. The term of it is ten years, with the Food Pantry having the right to extend two times for five years each, so it's a total of twenty years. The rent is a dollar a year, which we thank you for.
We negotiated that one.
You know, in turn, it's a pretty standard commercial lease. We don't have the right to assign without your consent. In terms of maintenance, the town does do most of the maintenance of the building, and that will continue. We, you know, we clean up after each shopping day, and, you know, we keep things as neat as we can in the common storage area, but the town will, again, thank you, continue to, to support the cleaning, particularly the snow removal, which is important for us. A lot of our clients are elderly, so we really need, and we just don't have the capability to, to plow or shovel. In terms of, you'll see there's a liability insurance, that's the insurance section that we do carry that, and that's been confirmed, and we'll provide certificates when we execute the lease. Standard default provisions, you know, 30 days notice. And then in terms of access, we had, we, the only thing we ask is that you don't access the, the Food Pantry during shopping hours, just to maintain client confidentiality, but otherwise, clearly, whenever anyone wants to come and see it. We're also happy if any members of the public want to come see it. We're happy to, you know, set up times to give them tours. It's really, we actually have a, we're doing something with the high school where they're gonna, you know, they're having this J-term.
Yes.
So they're going to be coming to us for one of the classes, Food in the Community, I think is the class. So we're working with them, so we're giving them access and a tour and...
And you have volunteers help stocking and everything else.
We do, we do. In fact, we have a, right now, we actually have a pretty robust volunteer list, which is great. The members of the board are the ones really working in the Food Pantry on the shopping days, again, to kind of limit people in there.
In a given month, how many families are you providing for?
We have about, in terms of families, we have about forty to fifty families. Percentage-wise, it's probably about 70% elderly, but we do have, you know, families with, with children, and those are more of a temporary basis, you know, layoffs and things like that. But, you know, and we're, we're always trying to do outreach. I think a lot of people don't know about us, so we work a lot with the Youth and Family Services to try and get people in and let us, you know, tell us if they need help, we're here.
No, this is great. I mean, this said, I know this had gone, the Food Pantry and the town have been working on this for a while.
Yes.
So this had been in a previous packet for us, so I know everybody's kind of read and knows some of the history. So I don't, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I, this is fine, really. I think it's such a valuable service in the community, and it has a long history.
It does, yeah.
And having that facility has been great to really handle things more appropriately, and your work to maintain the confidentiality yet meet the needs is really tremendous resource in the town.
Well, we need to thank the town because we have tremendous support from the town, from, from not just the citizens, but from, you know, all of the boards in town, and we couldn't do this without you guys, so thank you.
So we just need to approve the lease. I move that we vote to authorize the town administrator or his designee to execute the Food Pantry lease effective February 12th, 2018.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Maya. Good to see you.
Okay. Who puts up the next door? Is this you, the handicapped parking?
I guess it's me and Christine and John Denver.
All right. Let's hear about it.
And Chief Sullivan, a little bit?
So the traffic rules and orders have been updated over the years, but one section that wasn't updated was the handicap parking section, and there had been a schedule in there that referred to just a couple of handicap spaces in different privately-owned facilities throughout town, but it didn't cover any of the public facilities, which are really what's, what this section that the town's regulating should cover. Private handicap parking is covered under the building code. Public handicap parking in lots and on the street is not necessarily covered under the building code, but it is approved by the planning board when they consider a site plan review for any of the properties in town. So what we have there now is a list of all the town properties, the schools, the town hall, the libraries, the police station, the fire stations, and the ballfields, and each of them, it's listed how many parking, handicap parking spaces they each have. Then there's one handicapped on-street parking space that we have in town presently, that's on Washington Street, in front of the CVS store. Later down on your agenda, you'll consider a request for additional handicap spaces, but this is to bring the traffic rules and order up to speed. There are also changes to the, the front section, before you get to that table, to bring the rules and order into conformance with the town's general bylaw on handicap parking.
So is our takeaway on Fire Station 1 with zero handicap parking spaces an indication of the lack of ADA compliance?
It is.
I mean, with an older building and an odd lot?
Right. The building is not handicapped accessible. There are parking spaces in the rear of the, of the fire station, but you would have to come up a very steep hill to get to the front door. So there's no point in making those spaces accessible when you can't get into the building from there.
And I guess my other, my other question would be on the Westwood Public Library. Are the three that are there distinct from the Colburn School residential requirements?
They are, yes.
So they have their own under the private?
Right. There's another parking space, I believe it's a single one, for the Colburn School building.
So this all just clarifies what our policies are in town with regard to?
It does. And then we'll be updating that and adding to it as we add more handicap spaces at town facilities, or as things change.
I don't have anything.
Is the, the schedule we have, Nora, that I was just referring to, is that the one we're approving? Newly revised Schedule 9 listing all of the on-street and municipal parking areas in town?
Yes.
Okay, so I move that we approve the amendments as proposed to the traffic rules and orders, specifically Article 5A? Is that what the VA is?
Correct.
Is that the right?
Yep.
Handicap parking, to approve the newly revised Schedule 9 listing of all the on-street and municipal parking areas in town, and publish the amendments in a newspaper of local circulation to the general public.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed none.
Okay, so then, does that, is that, was, was that contingent on this next issue?
That was necessary to move on to the next issue.
To move on to the next issue? Okay, so why don't you tell us about that?
Okay, so I have a handout to help illustrate the next issue. There are some photographs in here of 246 and 256, I believe, that address on Washington Street. This is the former ski stop building, which will soon be the home to Matt the Barber, and it's right next to Sally &amp; Rocco's. And Matt has requested that the town approve the addition of two handicap spaces in front of his building. Right now, there are several parking spaces, there, I believe there are three parking spaces in front of those two buildings. He's requested that two of those spaces be restricted for handicap parking, and the reasoning is that the parking for both of these businesses is down a driveway that is right next to the former ski stop building, and there's about a 10-foot drop in grade from street level to the far end of the parking lot. So there's a fairly steep driveway there that customers need to walk up, and Matt believes that he has a number of customers who are handicapped and would not be able to get into his building from the back parking lot. So he was hoping to have two spaces restricted in front of the building. Now, this, this on-street parking does serve both buildings. It'll serve the former ski stop, which will be Matt the Barber, and another commercial use that's undetermined yet, and it also serves Sally &amp; Rocco Salon.
And both of those entrances for those buildings are handicapped accessible?
I don't know that Sally &amp; Rocco's is. The former ski stop building is under renovations right now and will be fully accessible when those renovations are done.
Yeah, Sally &amp; Rocco's.
It is, so they both are then.
Does the owner of these properties have any comment on this?
Well, I spoke to him today, and he had no objection to the designation of handicap spaces. He did express concern for restricting two of the three spaces that were there, and suggested you might want to consider restricting one to start with and to see if that is sufficient to meet the customer's needs before restricting a second. And the concern there is that there are a number of handicapped individuals that go to these businesses, but there are also a number of people that are, do not have handicap license plates, but have difficulty walking up that steep ramp. And if two of the three spaces are restricted for handicapped accessibility, non-handicapped customers who need the accommodation of a, a space right in front of the facility would have trouble. They wouldn't be able to park there.
But I guess that was my reaction, was why wouldn't we start with one? Single determination is...
I, I think that would be reasonable to do that. Another issue that Sergeant Sakar raised was that a handicap parking space then needs a handicapped accessible ramp to the sidewalk.
That was my other piece.
If you were to designate the northernmost space as a handicap space, there's a ramp that's partially the driveway that gets you onto the sidewalk.
Is that qualified?
Well, I asked Sergeant Sakar to take a look at that, and he said he would look into it and get back to us. His only concern would be that if there was a car coming out of the driveway, and there was a, a customer in, who was handicapped, having to wait to get in, that would be a problem. But the driveway, as you can see from the last... But the driveway, as you can see from the last photograph, it's wide enough that a car coming out would be on the right side of the driveway, and there would be sufficient room for a handicapped individual to leave their car and maneuver onto the sidewalk.
At least it should be on the right side.
It should be on the right side, sure.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we want to make at least one. I just, I guess my preference, we want to be as accessible as possible, but to, to everybody. And my fear is that locking out two-thirds of the parking, my fear is that we'll drive by there and see two sitting empty all the time when people who don't necessarily have the placard are then walking down that, that steep drive.
Or you'll see people parking there because they need that accessible space, but they won't have the placard and they'll be ticketed. So, that would be a great concern as well.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I'm Sally from Sally and Rocco.
Oh, hello.
We've been there for over twenty-two years. And we, we have quite a few handicapped individuals that come into the salon. What we do for our clients is when they pull up our front, they come out, they access the, and we park their cars.
We'll park their car for them if there's an issue. We've done that for, to accommodate the people.
To take up two spaces in the front would not be fair to the client's health. There, as, as she's saying, there would be a lot of empty space all day long.
Right. So, you agree one is probably the preference?
We're, we're fine with one. We're fine with one. Two, I think, is beyond.
I'm glad you're here, because I was going to comment that we haven't heard from your operation before now.
The driveway you're talking about that she looked at, there, there's one way in, one way out. Two cars cannot pass. If he was looking at the other driveway to our neighbor, that could be very dangerous right there on that end, to put a ramp, because it is a single driveway.
But if they were to park behind the store, and if they made it handicap accessible to get into the barber shop through the back, would be no issues.
I don't think they can.
Oh, I don't know about that.
I don't believe that building is accessible.
That I don't.
You would need an elevator to make it accessible.
Twenty-two to twenty-three years, and we've never had an issue, so...
I'd rather see one.
Yeah.
And will we revisit it if we have to? That would be my suggestion. Sally?
I'm fine with one, yes.
I think it's wonderful what you're doing so people can get into your store.
Yeah.
And, and I also can appreciate the barber, he probably similarly has a lot of people who need some assistance in a different patient.
I mean, my brother-in-law is disabled, so, I mean, I know firsthand with a wheelchair and everything, so, we'll do whatever we have to do.
Okay. Well, then, why don't we proceed? I move the Board of Selectmen designate one spot in front of the 256, 262, Washington Street address as handicap spaces, requiring that the spot be appropriately marked with signage and painting by the DPW and the Public Safety Department, that the property owner provide a handicap accessible curb cut, which needs to be designed and clearly marked on the pavement so the ramp is accessible from both space, from the space, not both spaces, from the space, and not blocked by a vehicle in, in that spot. Is that at all clear?
I think so.
And finally, that the Board of Selectmen add this spot to Schedule Nine of the traffic rules and orders regarding handicap parking.
I'll second.
Is there any other public comment? We're hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
And come back to us. Go to Nora if you, if there's any observations you have, and let us know if there's any problem.
I did call today because someone had said to me, I don't know if this has to do with you guys, that we could apply for in a municipal lot, we could apply for, like, reserved parking?
I'm not sure you can do that, but Nora would be the person.
Yeah, we needed an application, but no one got back to me, so I'm not sure on that.
Oh, I'd be happy to talk to you about that.
Okay. And then also about if and when the municipal lot is being moved, do you have another area that people will be able to park during that?
So, if the municipal law is relocated, the spaces will be replicated?
I understand that, but during the transition...
During, during the construction, they would be...
There will be designed spots. Okay. Okay.
My wife is one of your clients. And my wife is one of your clients.
Lots of clients in town will be upset if they can't park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Okay. Onto Mr. McCusker, you gonna help us with the ballot question for the 2018 election?
Yeah.
Get you off guard.
I should have called one, John.
It's really straight.
Play Tetris down there on your phone. I caught you.
Forty-one.
So, we took up a town meeting, the change to our charter, to have the fire chief treated the same as the police chief.
Yeah. Basically, what happened was we amended the charter.
Right.
And when you amend the charter by voter town meeting, it then has to be ratified by the ballot question on the next election.
What happens if the ballot issue fails?
I haven't looked that far.
Failure is not an option.
We have to prepare the question, and that's been prepared, and we have to prepare...
Arguments on both sides?
Yep.
Uh, no, not on both sides. Just an explanation as to what the ballot question is for, and it's simply to bring the charter into conformity with the voter town meeting.
And I guess, so I guess I, I didn't realize this till I had read this, but, so if we, if we don't have it ratified, is, is then our charter change subject to challenge? Is that the fear?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Majority votes.
Tom, you and I go and door knocking to get this thing passed, though, because you can't fail.
I'd be happy to do that. Make my life a lot easier.
Okay. So, do we need to vote, then?
Yes.
Is it in the form?
Yeah, it's in the back.
Forty-two.
Yeah, I know where it is. Tom, the, the explanation is, I think, exceedingly brief.
Yes.
If we vote to put the question on, can we still amend the language that accompanies the question of the article? Or the ballot question? Or we...
We can do that, but not, not after the ballot is prepared.
Right. So, how much time do we have?
We want to expand on that.
That's what I'm thinking. It just, for somebody coming in who wasn't part of the discussion and the process, it feels light on information, and I think, you know, in the effort to be as transparent as we can be for the ballot question, we might want more information.
I'll expand it.
So, I'll move that we do this as-is, and if you come back with something, we can revisit it. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, that's perfect.
All right. So, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following question on the 2018 town election ballot. The question reads, shall this, this town approve the charter amendment proposed by the annual town meeting vote on Article 34 on May 1st, 2017, summarized below? And the summary presently reads, the 2017 annual town meeting voted to rescind the acceptance of three sections of the general laws relating to the fire department. The proposed charter amendment brings the charter into accordance with that vote.
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Tom. Inter-municipal agreement for the operation of a public safety antenna in Canton. Don't rush up here.
Don't do that.
Thank you, Chief Sullivan, for joining us.
Thank you.
What do we got?
So, there's been radio deficiency in the university, have section of town for a long time, but prior to the development down there, we didn't go there frequently enough to warrant the improvement of the infrastructure. But now, clearly, that's not the case, which is good in terms of the development, but it's dangerous in terms of the police and fire operations down there. The infrastructure we had needed to be enhanced in a way where we could get line of sight from our, we have a tower, an antenna over on Fox Hill, and it couldn't connect to the tower we have at Eversource. So, we had a topographical study done, and the radio professionals came in and looked at where the most efficient locations would be, and that location was on Indian Lane in Canton. So, they have a tower there, there was room, they were willing to let us put the equipment up there because it's very small. So, we did that recently, and that allows us to go from Fox Hill to Canton, and then it connects back in both directions to every, one, one direction, to Eversource in one direction, back to Fox Hill. So, that's improved that section of the radio coverage to a level that's at least safe externally. We weren't even getting coverage on the portable radios, really, in the parking lot. Again, it was the line of sight issue, and secondarily, it was because it was built on old technology. It was copper wire, and so this is microwave. The town of Canton, which lots of towns do, just wanted to have an agreement in place just to set out, what if they needed to move the, our equipment, and, you know, what about any costs that were incurred? So, it's a very low fee, I think it's about $25 a week, which is probably...
Yeah, I had $1,200 annually, so...
Yeah. So, I mean, it would be, you know, that would probably be a tenth of what we'd be paying if we were trying to go to a private town. So, they asked that, we drafted that up, so Mr. McCusker, he just worked with their town council and Mike Gillette, sent it over to Chief Deckers and I to take a look at. We had a couple tweaks, and that's what's before you now.
Thank you. Chief Deckers, anything? No? Tom, are we good? Tom? We're okay with this agreement?
Oh, yes. That's fine.
Okay. It sounds, that's great to hear. $1,200 a year, we're correcting your problem.
Yeah, absolutely. Correcting the problem that we had. And the chief and I have sat down, as Chief Scobal and I started to do before we left, and really kind of look at the radio infrastructure globally, because just like our building infrastructure, you know, it's aging. So, we're trying to do it in a way and work with Pam where we identify potential phases to build out the radio system in a way that makes sense. But this was a very necessary improvement. I mean, it was literally causing us, for a several-week period, that we had to send additional staff to those locations because we weren't able to communicate on the portable radio, so we had to make sure we had somebody in a cruiser or a fire apparatus with the more powerful radios to be able to get back and forth.
Jeff, how does this relate to what we've been discussing in terms of the need for other improved service?
Uh, it's, so it's related, it's under the same general problem of aging technology. What this does is gives us a entry-level amount of coverage for the exterior. We've been talking about in one of the phases doing something that's called simulcast, where basically you're transmitting and receiving from two locations simultaneously, and the equipment decides where the signal is stronger, and with that, you get, it's what they call radio frequency penetration. So, if a firefighter is inside, let's say, the Gables, or a police officer is inside, you know, the Gables, and you're trying to talk on your portable radio to say who needs what, what kind of help is it, whether it's a fire or medical call, that simulcast will allow you to do it. Before we could even talk about simulcast, though, we had to kind of connect the link of the radio, because it, you know, right now, it's built almost on a triangle, and we had one leg of the triangle off. So, we had to get that leg of the triangle connected, and then we can talk about making it a bigger triangle so we get better coverage.
Okay. So, I move we approve and sign the presented inter-municipal agreement for operation of the public safety antenna between the town of Westwood and the town of Canton.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we are meeting next on February 26th, which is still PM before the Finance Commission hearing. So, we don't have to go too in-depth tonight, but we'll touch on a few things. So, a couple of discussion items. The street acceptances articles, at this time, there are no streets being considered for acceptance at town meeting, so we won't need a warrant. Are you, you look skeptical? No?
No, no acceptances.
No hedgerow?
No hedgerow?
Hedgerow wouldn't be a street acceptance, it would be a discontinuance of...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
The authorization for disposition of municipal property, Islington Center, the project continues through the application phases with the planning board, the board should leave this article on the warrant until decisions are made. Authorization of disposition of municipal property, Obert Baker House. So, you got no bidders for the Obert Baker House?
No. So, we're asking to withdraw that article.
There's a placeholder, the most controversial article we may have this year. Chief Deckers, join us. This got the most discussion at the Finance Commission.
That's okay.
Without anything before them.
Discussion is good.
So, a town bylaw amendment, removal of snow and ice around fire hydrants.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I am suggesting that we enact a, a change so that the, any fire hydrant that is abutting a property will be taken care of, like they do now when they mow around it or weed, just to make it look good, is during the winter when we have excessive snow, that they actually shovel it out, too. Most property owners are taking care of it, I've found very few in my short time here already. You know, when there's no snow on the ground, there's no bushes and all those things around it, so people are meantime. But what I did find, very shortly after the January 4th snowfall, when we had, you know, twelve, seventeen inches, depending upon where you were, I was in town and someone actually stopped me and asked me why the fire department was not shoveling, outshoveling hydrants. And my answer to them was that, one, we don't, we have done that in the past out of convenience, because we don't want to be caught not having it done. And they, fire department really knows where the bad hydrants tend to be, so they're gonna go clear those hydrants, because the town already, many folks already clear their hydrants.
What is bad?
Meaning they're buried, completely buried, and you can't find them. And, you know, when we have a fire, we come fully trained, ready to go, but we bring a very small amount of water with us. We bring 750 gallons. And when we're using that, that's gone in three minutes. So, and on our first new apparatus coming in, there's three people. So, those people are tied up doing a bunch of things, they can't be tied up finding, trying to find a hydrant, and then having to shovel it out. It really slows us down, it doesn't really make for us to get our job done efficiently. So, what we're asking is that we enact a change in ordinance or bylaw that just requires the property owners to shovel out their hydrants and clear them if there's snow anywhere buried within four inches of the lowest outlet on the hydrant, which is really the lowest outlet, tends to be where we connect the big lines so that we can feed the trucks. So, that's what we're looking to get done. And a lot of this really is an education for our, our property owners, and that's really the important side of it, hence the reason, if you look at the violations section, it really talks about written warnings as your first offense, because I want to see this more as an educational opportunity than a fine. I can tell you from my 22 years of experience in the town that I came from, we had an ordinance like this. And to my knowledge, it was not ever a fine placed on it. We would use it as an educational opportunity, but we had something to stand with, we had a document that we could hand to somebody, instead of just saying, hey, the fire department asked us to clear, there's an actual statement that says you should clear it. So, that's what we're asking you to consider, to do that. With the language that I gave you this evening, you know, it talks about clearing it if it's within four inches of that bottom, lowest outlet, three feet around, and a path so that we can get to it and be able to find those hydrants. And as you can see, I gave pictures, ones that need to be shoveled, and I couldn't find one totally buried, because most of the time, it would just be a snow pile, and you wouldn't see the hydrant. But we did have several of those after that storm earlier this year. And the, the ones that don't need to be shoved, shoveled, and then what it really, the optimal result would be is shoveling it down so that we can get to it without a problem and not delay our response. So, that's what I'm asking you to consider, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to...
How many fire hydrants do we have? Do you know roughly?
The GIS that I receive, we have 605, but while driving around town, I found two more that weren't on my list, so I would imagine I'm...
Six hundred-ish?
Six hundred-ish. And, you know, with our staff really at anywhere from six, seven, eight, or nine people, we just don't have the staffing to be able to clear those hydrants in a timely fashion to do all 600-plus hydrants in a timely fashion. But the folks are already shoveling their driveways, they're already doing their walkways.
Right.[1760.28] Right.
We're just asking them just to take one more little bit of help for us, and I commend the schools, they did a phenomenal job this year of adopting hydrants, and they were out team fighting team, trying to get the number of hydrants cleared, which was awesome. But in the end, we really need, and you, our taxpayers really need, to have their hydrants cleared, so if we do have a problem, we can get that hydrant, we can get the water on the fire, and put the fire out quickly.
My only concern, Chief, is that, what about those that are handicapped or elderly that can't do that? So how do we make up for that? In other words?
I think, yeah, I absolutely do, and I, and I can totally see where you're coming from, but those individuals, I would imagine, are not shoveling their own driveways.
Right.
And they're paying somebody to do it.
Correct.
It would be adding that to their contract with those folks to come and shovel those out. And, again, depending upon where the hydrant is and what goes on, this is only big storms that we really need this done, and on the, you know, areas of town, like on cul-de-sacs, where contractors will push snow out, and then the town comes by and they just keep doing that, it builds up and covers the hydrant, so we can't even find it when it's there. So that's why we really need that assistance, and it's, again, I said, it's an education, but.
I have a couple of questions. A while back, as an Eagle Scout project, one of our local Eagle Scouts did the program Putting the Markers on. Are those maintained, in other words, if they aren't there, is the fire department putting any back, or?
No, we don't. Now, the Dedham Westwood Water.
Okay.
Authority, it's their hydrants, I have to check with them to see if they replace those, but as you drive around town, you see many of them are missing or broken.
That's what I was wondering, so that was a great change. I remember bad snowstorms many years ago on my street, wanting to go out and find the hydrant, knowing generally where it was, but of course, it's like, is it on the right side of the tree, or the left side of the tree, when you've got two feet of snow built up, and you don't know where it is?
Yes.
That's daunting. Now the marker's there, that helps. So that, that would be worth looking into with them, because there, I just know from firsthand experience, and I'm sure others can comment, sometimes you just don't know where the hydrant is.
Hence, hence our biggest issue when we come to put the fire out at your house.
And that day, I remember calling the fire department and saying, are you able to tell me where it is?
Yes.
This was 20 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And the answer was no.
Right.
So that emphasizes the importance of those markers.
Right, and one thing that we did just recently, we've added technology to our fleet, we're hopefully, get the iPads up and running shortly, I downloaded into software, so we know exactly where those hydrants are from our list, and they're actually GIS-coded, longitude and latitude.
We've come a long way in 20 years.
Yeah, so we do have an idea, but again, that's not something, when you're looking at a house burning, that we're pulling out our iPad.
We all want to know where they are, you especially.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna play a hypothetical, so I think this is a great thing to have a discussion about, and allow the town to engage in the discussion. I'm gonna give you a hypothetical that's as real as I can, but I'm gonna try to describe it. So if we're on Pond Street, there's a sloping hill on Pond Street, not far from where I live, and the home that sits way up on the hill, and I'd say it's 35 feet up a hill, access is a street behind, but I suspect that house would be associated with the hydrant that's down on Pond Street, that they can't get access to, there's no way for them to walk down, it's a steep drop.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna be responsible for that hydrant on Pond Street, they're the closest to butter.
So there's no other property that would, would sit near that?
Across the street.
Yep.
Across the street, but not on that side of the street, and it's a strange spot, so some point, I'll point out exactly where it is. So hypothetically, when there are situations where it's really hard to get to it and know who's responsible for it, I just would say that we'd have to have some, I'm sure you're a reasonable person, and the department's reasonable, some reasonableness, but there may be some that have to be flagged as, it's not clear who's gonna be responsible for it, and add it to that bad list.
Yes, and I would, I would advocate, in those scenarios, that that hydrant that you described is really a benefit of the people directly across the street.
It is, absolutely.
So that individual really should adopt this. I would also advocate that, as I said before, my goal is not to find people, it's to educate them on the need to get this done. Now, if people were piling snow, pushing it out of their driveway and putting it up on top of that one, I could definitely see enacting.
Yeah, so now I'm gonna play that scenario out some more. Where it's located, and at least in my mind's eye, we would not want somebody standing in the street there to clear it out.
Right.
It would not be a safe situation. After an extraordinary snowfall, where the snow was plowed up, the person would literally need to be in the street trying to find.
Right.
The hydrant, so I just, you're gonna get challenged on instances like that, and it's things like that that concern me with.
Right, and in those scenarios, I wouldn't want them in the street either, and the way, you know, when I was a young firefighter back in Connecticut, when we would be out clearing hydrants after big storms, we never started in the street, just for that reason, even though we had big fire trucks protecting us, you just never knew. You always got inside by the fire hydrant, you climbed in, and you dug out from there, so you were always on the land, and never on the pavement. Never is a strong word, because, but you try to flex that, and I would advocate that the individual take their car and park it on there while they were clearing out that example.
So might, there might need to be some guidance given to people along the way.
Absolutely, and as we said, it would be, this is an educational approach to helping neighbors, helping us get our jobs done here in town, just because we don't have the resources to do it, and, you know, we may find that we have a handful of those that the fire department is still going to need to help with, which, if I can reduce it from 600-ish to 25, then that's a manageable number, that I can hire a crew back in and go out with a service truck to do it, or while we're in between calls, which our heaviest call volume is during the daylight, we won't allow someone to shovel at night, because that's very dangerous.
Yes.
We would have to try to get it, so we would hire overtime to come back and cover those identified hazards.
You know, when you say something like that, I guess I might suggest something to consider with the drafted language. It does say within 24 hours after ceasing to fall or form.
The legalese.
More focusing on the 24 hours now. If you made it 48, it's like, you still needed to be cleared out as soon as possible, so I don't know if there's some element of.
Gift?
Flexibility that can be written into the language.
The key, though, and the reason I would leave.
Storms still run when we want them to.
I would leave it at 24 if I had my way.
Yeah.
Only because the importance of clearing those hydrants. You never know when that fire's gonna be, and it could be right in the middle of a storm, we've had it, so it's, it could be there.
My suggestion's going to be 36 hours, but I'll just leave it at that.
So, I mean, which is fine, with 36 hours, because at the end of the day, if that hydrant is not shoveled, we're gonna spend the time finding it, we're gonna spend the time shoveling it and hooking up to it, which is gonna delay us from doing our real job. So, yes, it can't be done, I don't want people out there shoveling this hydrant every inch of snow to keep it down, for sure.
After dark. If a storm ends at midnight, the 24 hours is the next midnight, and the people couldn't get, you know.
And I don't expect our police department driving around in cruisers, ticketing people, that's not the point of this.
No.
The real point is to show that, one, the fire department can't do this. It's not really in our scope of delivery, when you really look at what we're delivering. We're delivering emergency medical care, and fire suppression, and hazard mitigation, and any help the community can give us to do that, and allow those water sources to be available for us, is the reason I'm putting this campaign out.
And I want to say to Selectman Walsh's point, which is a really good one about people with handicaps issues or age, just really not being able to do that, that maybe part of, if this is to pass, if it does, even if it doesn't, that we use the town newsletter as a vehicle to communicate to people and say, if the hydrant is in front of a property where someone is not able to, that neighbors work together to have a plan.
I think that's really, I mean, it really comes down to is trying to get the neighbors to help cooperate and cover.
Exactly.
Because it's not just one house that's gonna be protected by that fire hydrant.
Absolutely, and I can tell you, the Council of Aging sent me a document just the other day with the projection of the storm we were gonna have, for people that are available just to do things like this, in the shoveling of walkways and driveways for the senior citizens and the folks that can't. So even though we can't maintain a list of people we would recommend you do business with.
Right.
The Council of Aging has put out a document saying, hey, these folks have been, are a list of people that have been used in the past with good success by the people using them.
Right.
So we would advocate that our folks that can't do it themselves could reach out and find it, and again, I would advocate that the amount of times that folks will be shoveling this year was probably once, maybe twice. Depending upon where your property is and what the roads look like, thankfully, knock on wood. So it's not a huge amount, but we do need to be prepared, and it's, and it sort of addresses the perception that I got hit with, that someone demanding that the fire department be out there shoveling hydrants, and it's really not what we're here to do, we're here to actually provide the ALS care and the, and put the fire out, and to do that, it just, it increases our risk, our injuries, our workers' comp claims, all of that, because they're not just doing one hydrant, they're gonna try to do 100 hydrants, and when they do that, the ability, or potential for them to get hurt is much greater, because they're hustling through it, to get it done as fast as they can do it opposed to the community pitching in and helping out.
Okay.
Good discussion.
So we don't have to take any action on it, what we do have to take action on is removal of two. So it'll be included, we'll have a robust discussion on the 26th, please come back.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I move we vote to delete the following articles from further consideration at the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. The first one, Authorization of Disposition of Municipal Property, specifically the Obed Baker House, and the second one, Zoning Amendments Related to the Obed Baker House, including a map amendment to change the zoning of AP 21 Lot 42 and/or AP 21 Lot 43, and/or to expand the FMUOD 7 district.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a meeting.
Can I just add, sorry, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Can I just add that I just want to say, we did go into the FinCon last week, and go through all of the financial articles with them. We had a good meeting, and went through the budget and the other financial articles, so they've seen all of those now.
Great. The meeting minutes of January 8th, 2018, any edits?
I move approval of minutes from January 8th, 2018.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, any commentary or questions from the public or press? Okay, hearing none. The Board's next meeting will be on Monday, February 26th, at 7:30 PM in the EOC Training Room here at the police station. At this time, the Board of Selectmen will be going into executive session to discuss three issues. One issue related to potential land acquisition and potential litigation at University Station, one issue related to the sale, lease, exchange of real property related to the Islington Center redevelopment, and one issue related to the acquisition of real property located at 5 Highview Street, all of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussions were in open session. The Board will not be returning to open session. Thank you.
I move we go into executive session for the aforementioned three reasons.
I'll second.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.[1790.84]